2025, let's call to order the work session of the Clark County Commission on Aging. Please remember when you speak, we request that you state your name so everyone can track who is talking. And when you're not talking, please mute your microphones. Okay, the first thing on the agenda is proposed bylaw changes. Does anyone want to give an update on where we are with that?
I can give an update. So we included the proposed bylaw changes in your packet of information. We reviewed them at the January or the February work session and meeting. And this would be the second review in the meeting will be the second review. Two reviews are required by the bylaws. And so if you would like to approve those, you can do so in the meeting. Happy to answer any questions. I'm also happy to review the proposed changes, but since you've seen them before, I'm also happy not to do it.
This is Ken Lund. My question, you like that? My question is, as I recall, yeah, there are some administrative changes, but the only substantial issue that had much discussion around it was the potential to be perpetually on the board versus term limits. Is my recall correct?
It is correct. The proposed changes to modify the language for how long you can stay on the commission has been removed based on the discussion that happened at the February meeting. There was, there was, basically, there was not enough support. Or, and there were some members that were concerned about the proposed changes. And so we have removed that at this point.
So this is Cass speaking. So we are back down to a maximum of two consecutive terms. Thank you so much.
Yes.
This is Ellen Rogers. And I just, do we need to have a certain number of members to have a quorum to vote on this?
So?
So we have it?
Yes, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
Correct. So this is just a question and answer session. And then, yes, at the very end of the meeting, you'll have a vote.
This is Ellen again. So we left in the language about the self nomination or being nominated by members of the commission. We just kind of added that anyone can do it.
Okay. Correct.
All right.
We thought that that just answered any questions that might come up, that both ways are acceptable.
Any other discussions or questions on the bylaws before we move on? Okay, let's go on to discussing possible new committees and liaisons. And we have National Night Out Committee, New Member Committee, and the Washington State Council on Aging Liaison.
National Night Out Committee, it's coming up. And we wanted to form a committee to start talking about having, maybe what we had discussed in the past was a possible table jointly staffed with ADSWA and wanted to get a group of members to start discussing that.
Has that committee been formally established yet?
No, we need volunteers.
Actually, I'm the lone member right now. So this is Mike Anderson.
So this is Amy Wooton for Community Planning. I've got the roster on the screen. And we have had Cass, Ken, and Mike all volunteer. We have room for one more member on National Night Out if somebody else is interested in participating.
So can I ask a question? This is Ellen Rogers. ADSWA has always participated in the National Night Out. Are they planning on having a table?
So my recollection is that Christina was at a meeting where that was discussed previously, and she mentioned that maybe that could happen. I don't believe that they have had a table in the past. So it's a possibility. And if we want to, you know, we can email her and ask her interest. And if she, if she has anyone that could attend, it was just a suggestion, I think.
Okay, and then I have another question about the National Night Out event. I know we've discussed it in past meetings, and I probably haven't been here. But I'd like to understand a little bit about the National Night Out event, because I have a different understanding about what it is. So I would like to understand why, how it aligns with what we do.
This is Mike Anderson. I've been involved with National Night Out for a number of years. What happens is throughout the country and in Clark County, groups usually work through their neighborhood associations. And there will be a number of sites that there will be tables set up for vendors and organizations to talk about what they do. At Hagan Park in East Vancouver, we have like 40 or 50 groups that come. And I've even had the Vancouver Symphony play in that. In Camas and Waschuggal, I think they come together, if I recall correctly, and do a National Night Out, like city get together. That, I believe, also happens up in Ridgefield. In the city of Vancouver, there may be five or six, based on the size of the neighborhood and those associations. So they invite folks to come in, and most people put up a canopy, have a table, chairs, and they have different things to hand out to people about what they do.
So who typically attends the event, I guess, is my question?
Well, I can speak to the one in my neighborhood. As we have had the Humane Society, Vancouver Library, Vancouver Police, Clark County CERT, Scout Units, both Boy Scouts, well, Scouting America and Girl Scouts, several other companies like Waste Connections, and other service providers will be there. And at ours, we also have refreshment stands. And there's a, I don't know if it's a company or nonprofit that sets up like a kids' club where they have all kinds of events for kids going on, bounce houses, stuff like that. So it really depends on what the neighborhood association wants to do.
And I guess, who attends the event? I guess is my question. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
National Night Out event in my community, so I live in Ridgefield, looks to me to be a, it's mostly focused on families and children. And it's, so I have never attended it. So I'm trying to understand how it fits with the Commission on Aging.
Yeah, well, they're in, depends on the makeup of the neighborhood. In our neighborhood, we have a senior community, literally, as part of our neighborhood. And we've had up to 700 people come, which I would say probably 25 to 30% are seniors. Howe, which is downtown area in that, they also do one, and they have a lot of seniors in the area. So it really depends on the makeup of the neighborhood and whether they have older residents or younger residents. Ridgefield, I know with all the new developments and stuff, probably are kind of leaning towards younger. But it really depends on what the community wants to do.
And what organization kind of, what's the main organization that leads this event?
There's no one main organization. It's just a program that started years ago to get people to come out, meet each other, talk about issues. Because in a lot of areas in the suburbs, people feel a lot more isolated. They don't know their neighbors. They kind of wonder what's going on in the community. So this just gets people out of their houses. And with us, it's at a regional, we consider Hagan Park a regional park. And so we get folks from all over, probably a mile or so radius from that park.
But I assume this is also coordinated with the people that staff the neighborhood associations are coordinated with and through them. So every neighborhood has an association and a board and all of that, that to some degree is coordinated with and sponsored by the county.
Yeah, I guess in Ridgefield, it seems to be a very police-driven event. That's what I see from everything. Like, it's pretty heavily on pals, and it's pretty kid-focused. So I guess where, where is, where will we be focusing? Since this is a national event, and it's in so many neighborhoods?
So I was.
Where are we planning on being?
I was running on the assumption, and first of all, that we'll meet and we'll discuss that kind of thing. But I was running on the assumption that since Vancouver's the epicenter, if you will, of Clark County, that they will probably be having some form of a larger event that might have public, if it, no? Well, it goes back to my naivety on this.
Yeah, it's really up to the neighborhoods. I know at ours, we have the police chief come, the mayor swings by. She hits five or six or seven. They kind of run together, city councilors, to the different sites. And so it's really based on your neighborhood association's strength and that of putting it together. And once you get the first one going, it's a lot easier to get them going year by year.
Mike, a quick question. What's, what's the actual date of the?
It's, this is Susan, it's August 5th. Yeah. So I understand Mike is suggesting that each event is slightly different. But I am on the National Night Out website. And it does say, "National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live. National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. Furthermore, it provides a great opportunity to bring police and neighbors together under positive circumstances."
Would you repeat the date again?
August 5th.
And one last question, Mike. Is there any connection between Neighborhood Watch and the Night Out?
No. Neighborhood Watch is kind of, in Vancouver, is kind of a misnomer. We have a group called Neighbors on Watch, which is the official volunteer group for the police department. Neighborhood Watch is a program that's sometimes done really well and sometimes hasn't, cross-country, based on how they can keep it going and keep it within certain regulations and that. So Neighborhood Watches can start up, but they have nothing to do with this or the, at least in Vancouver, with the police department.
This is April. So circling back on Ellen's questions, I think I'm also kind of struggling a little bit to understand, what is our role going to be for a National Night Out? If it's not a senior-specific event, and there's multiple potential places? And I'm obviously not on the committee, so that's fine. But I was just kind of trying to better understand.
I think you're the chair of the committee. But again, I think the purpose of the committee is to come up with a plan on if we're going to be there wherever there is, how we would represent. I don't know that we have the answer to that yet. But one of the things we should vet is if this is going to be in a gazillion neighborhoods, we're not going to be in a gazillion neighborhoods. But if there's 16 or 10 or whatever board members, we probably can be in eight or 10 for 30 minutes. So it goes back to a question that I asked you, which is off-subject, and we do not need to discuss it now. But it's an example of how are we going to be involved in the community as board members? Or are we going to continue to sit here and listen to nice presentations that serve no purpose?
Any more discussion on this particular one? Okay, let's move on to the new member committee.
This is, this is Amy. We are embarking on our process for recruiting for new members. The schedule, the news release was sent out on March 12th, and the application period closes April 9th. Ellen, that's for you.
I just put a reminder in my phone that starts tomorrow saying, "Send the letter." But you need a full letter, you need everything, like a full application?
Yes, ma'am.
And then I get to be interviewed?
Yes.
Okay.
Same process as last time. I just, we sent the news release out already. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that the period had opened.
And, yep, and it's on my list. I can show you the reminder.
Oh, that's good. I just wanted to check.
Every day, it will remind me.
So we have established so far that we're going to have a WebEx meeting. So everybody should write these dates down. We're going to have a WebEx meeting on Tuesday, April 15th at 1:00 p.m. And we're going to have interviews in person on Wednesday, April 23rd, from 3:00 to 5:00. So considering those commitments, do we have volunteers for the new member committee?
With permission, I'd like to put my name in for the new member.
If I volunteer, can I not be part of, not apply? Okay, never mind.
April 15th is at 1:00. And the in-person interviews are from 3:00 to 5:00 on April 23rd. We have Cass and Justin both had already volunteered. Franklin volunteered. So Mike or Ken, you guys want to duke it out?
Need a body, I'm happy to do it. He's got more experience than me.
Okay, I will send calendar invites for you guys. So we'll reserve those spots. Thank you.
Okay, did you have Ken on there too? Okay, thank you. Any more questions or discussion on new member committee? Okay, let's move on to the Washington State Council on Aging Legislation. And could you give us a little background on that?
I, this is Amy. I sent an email to the Washington State Aging Program. It's called, sorry, I'm getting confused with all of my, the Washington State Council on Aging. They call it SCOA. And they meet once a month. And I believe that you can attend the meetings by Zoom. And I have sent an email to the coordinator of that program to just see if we could have a liaison sit in on those meetings, like we do with ADSWA or Chart. I haven't heard from them, but I wanted to bring it up in case we might have somebody that would be interested in attending those meetings. They discuss legislative initiatives at the state level for aging. So it's kind of like the big brother or big sister to our program.
Do you know when they meet?
I believe, oh, I didn't write it down. I'm sorry, I apologize for that. It's towards the end of the month, I think, usually the last Tuesday. And it is in the morning, I believe. But I can double-check that and let you guys know.
Amy, this is Ken Lund. I usually say, hey, if you need a body, feel free to throw me in. I'd actually like to do this. And if somebody else does, I didn't come out right, did it? Sorry. I'd like to throw my hat in that ring. And if anybody else does as well, that's great. But I'm interested in that.
Do we have a second as kind of a backup?
I can back up. I'd be interested in that as well, with my policy background.
Okay, thank you, Ellen.
So it looks like the meetings are the last Tuesday or the fourth Tuesday of each month, from 9:00 a.m. till noon. You can go to Olympia, or you can attend on Zoom. Okay, I'll put you both down and let you know when I hear from their coordinator.
Okay, can we go ahead and move on to the Joint Youth Commission and COA Service Event?
Yes, this is Susan. You all have a flyer, hard copy flyer. And you might remember the most recent survey that came out regarding Youth Commission and Commission on Aging topics asked about a possible service event. And this was one of them. And it was the highest-supported service-type activity that people voted for in the meeting, or in the survey. I'm sorry, excuse me, one second.
Yeah.
Testing microphone. So this was, this was well-supported by COA members and Youth Commission members. And it is on Thursday, April 3rd, from 12:00 to 4:00. And the idea is that we would have one or two Youth Commission members and one or two Commission on Aging members for each hour, so shifts to cover. And there is, the Youth Commission has a game that they play. It's a big wheel. And you spin the wheel. And then, depending on what you land on, there are generational and mental health and healing-related questions. And the idea is to get input and feedback from the people who attend. And the Youth Commission has prizes that they give out, and they also have a button maker. And this relates to, you know, continuing our relationship with the Youth Commission. And I should have it up, but there is a goal that in the Commission on, on the Aging Readiness Plan that supports generational investment and activities. So if you're interested in doing this, I would be asking for volunteers on Thursday, April 3rd.
Before you ask for volunteers, I just have a question. You have two adulting 101 workshops, but four items listed. Can you clarify that? Is there going to be two of these four, or how does that work?
I believe that it's, there's a workshop on adulting 101, and there's two times that it is given. And those topics are covered in each of the, in each of the times that that workshop is presented.
Okay, and are you suggesting that we have more than two members to staff shifts, or?
I guess it depends on how many people are available during this time. We could do, it's four hours. So if we, you know, not doing it is an option. You can choose not to do it. You could choose to have four people each doing an hour shift. You could have eight people, two people each doing one-hour shifts. You know, where you have two members each hour. Or you could just have a couple people do it, and they would stay a little bit longer. It's totally up to how you would like to do it and how many, how much interest there is.
This is Ken Lund. What are we doing as volunteers?
So you would help run the game and ask people questions about mental health and healing and generational relationships. And we would get input on that topic for the, so the Youth Commission gets, gains, gets feedback during the year as a whole on those topics. And then they use it to, in their report that they put out at the end of the year. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm assuming, given that this is roughly two weeks out, that they're already marketing this, and they're filling the room, not us.
So this, this is happening whether you attend, whether anyone from the Commission on Aging or the Youth Commission attends?
This is just an opportunity to volunteer.
Correct. This is, this is a, an event that the Youth Commission was potentially interested in anyways. And they suggested it as one of the potential service events that the Commission on Aging and Youth Commission could do together. Some of the other ones in the survey were doing something at a park, like a cleanup, or there was a making some sort of boxes. When people are having difficult times, they give them boxes of support with messages and art and things. And I think there was one other option that was, was suggested. And this was the one that gained the most votes. If this is not something that you're interested in, we can go back to the table, back to communicating with the Youth Commission about other events that maybe you would want to do more.
If they have multiple events, would it be a fair thing to say that if we have interest? You know, it doesn't have to be eight of us, it could be one of us, right? And so if they've got six events, maybe we participate in two or three. You know, and this one, it sounds like an interesting one. I've, I've said, yeah, that's the one I like, so I'll volunteer. Okay, so now we have a volunteer. Anybody that wants to go with me?
Is it inside?
Is it outside?
Inside. Is it during spring break? I'm assuming it's inside in a church. This is Ellen. I think they do it at the youth house. Didn't she say they do it at?
No, it's at a church. Is that the Riverside Church? I haven't really, I assume it's inside, but I guess I don't, I would have to ask to know.
I'm going to assume. I will do it, I will sign up as long as, if you give me an early shift, I'm showing up in my climbing clothes, which means I'll be wearing a sweatshirt and a pair of yoga pants. If that's okay, then put me down for whenever.
That's 100% okay.
I'll be appropriate, not tight-on-tight, apparently.
And who is conducting the two adulting workshops?
That is another question I do not know the answer to. I believe it's probably the, I think that the main organizer of this is the Options Youth Program. I don't know a whole lot about that group, but I would think that they have organized those workshops. But I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, I was trying to determine if it would be appropriate for commission members to participate in any way in those workshops? Or do they already have sideboards on who's going to be in those?
I believe they already have those set up. So we would just, so the Commission on Aging would be, at a lot of events, you know, they have tables of different organizations. And the Commission and, the Youth Commission and the Commission on Aging would be volunteering at one of those tables to tell people about Commission on Aging and Youth Commission, and also gain feedback from the attendees.
It is spring break. So this is an event.
Spring break.
Basically devised to give kids some things to do during spring break, spring break. So if you put me down, I'll go, I'll be there.
Thank you. And it sounds like you would prefer the later.
Thank you. And it sounds like you would prefer the later time, correct?
I don't, as long as you don't mind me showing up in my climbing gear, I'm good all the way around. I'm usually just chalky. But I wash my hands.
Okay.
And this is Mike. I'm available for any or all of that. I'm retired.
And this is Cass. I can do like a three to four, one of the late ones, so.
And if it's not overcrowding, since I missed the January meeting, I'd like to go to some part of that. I didn't mean to misconstrue it in that manner.
Do you have a preference on time? Earlier? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. We got into questions. There, not everyone would have to go to this, but if you are interested, there would be a pre-meeting on March 27th at the Youth House where you could talk about the event and specifically what you would, would be doing there. If you can't make that, I plan on attending and could report out to you what is discussed. That is at 6:30 on March 27th, 6:30 PM.
Can you send everybody who volunteered information on where that meeting is?
I will.
Okay.
I will send everyone. Can you give me an idea if you think you might attend that? If you're, if you're even available? It would be good to know. And if easier, I can just, you can respond to the email as well.
I will not attend the organizational meeting, but you can give me whatever shifts work.
Any more questions or discussion on the youth summit activity? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to subcommittee reports. Is anyone here from the social media and communications plan?
This is Ken. I'm on that committee. We did not meet. So there's no update that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Franklin, just, I do have something I proposed to Donna that I was talking with Cass about that I could, would like to kind of present an idea of mine for that committee. Go for it. Okay, I was thinking a lot about all the different speakers we have coming here. And kind of like, what do we do with that information? At each meeting, we have two, three, four speakers. And we get to know about their programs and stuff. So last year, or yeah, I guess it was last year, Cass and I had gone downtown to see a what do you, what would you call it? A fair for service organization?
Expo.
Volunteer expo. And it came out that for us to do something like that here wouldn't be effective. We don't have the resources. So in my mind, I thought, well, what's another way we could approach this? So I mentioned to Donna last month, but we really didn't have time to talk about. And I think I sent some information to Susan and Amy. What I thought we could do would be, in a sense, a virtual expo. And the way we would do that is this, this is a printout of what our, our webpage looks like. What I propose is that we add some buttons on here. Perhaps volunteer opportunities or service information, whatever we want. Where we could hyperlink into another page that would take us into a listing of groups and organizations. On this one, I hate this microphone. On this one, I just was using Excel, so it's pretty, pretty conservative, just blocks with names. But if you clicked onto each one of these names boxes, that would hyperlink you into that organization's page. Along the right side, I put all the cities in Vancouver and I looked up the web addresses for their volunteer pages. So Ridgefield or Yakult or Vancouver, whatever, you could click on and go right to that city's volunteer page. And then I just looked up a bunch of other organizations. In thinking about it, I was thinking that as we have groups present to us their information, and it's all been excellent information, we list them on this page so that we've already kind of vetted these groups. They've had great information. And this is an opportunity for people to get that information by going through our webpage. And rather than small blocks, when I was talking with Cass, we could take their logo and put it there. So ASWA, put their logo, you click on ASWA, you go to the ASWA page. You put Meals on Wheels, their logo, click on that, it takes you to Meals on Wheels. So this would help in several ways by number one, helping us with trying to push for volunteerism for, from seniors. The other is to give seniors a place if they're looking and they need a specific help or assistance, they might find the organization here. And this, in fact, what I was thinking could be our work project for the year. Cause we're going to, by the end of the year, we're going to have probably talked to 25, 30 organizations, service providers and that. And this will help us kind of encapsulate a lot of the information that we've received and give an extra opportunity for people outside of this meeting to see it. We don't get a lot of online participation or even guests. And so when we have that meeting and it's over with, it's like, oh, we're done. What I'm thinking is using something like this to give us historical perspective on all the different groups that we've been talking to and to help get, help them get their message out to more of the public. I think it would go really well when we do our presentations to the cities, when they ask us what we do. And I think it would be, go even better with the county council. When they ask, what have you done for the last year? We can say, well, we've met with 25 different organizations, had some wonderful presentations. And we've created a way for the public to come in and to see what these organizations do. It could be to their webpage, or it could be to a video clip of their presentation based on what the requirements are for the county and that. So I don't know if that works with the idea. I know Cass was pretty interested in it and I didn't, didn't have a chance to talk to Ken. But I think this would be kind of a worthwhile endeavor. Although it would take some technical resources just to set this up. But I did this page myself in about an hour and a half. Just because of some work I'd done in the state of Oregon similar to this. So.
If you're just creating hyperlinks, this is a very easy project and it's a worthwhile project. Buzzsaw is going to be, will the county be willing to do it? And we don't need to resolve that here, but just know it's not a technically difficult thing to do. And it would be a tremendous, another point of contact. That's all great. We just need to understand. My guess is that's going to be a tough sell. But we don't need to go there now.
Just a footnote to put into the conversation on the communications plans of committee. You need to think really hard about how to move from a passive posture into a more active posture, getting exposure for the commission. Because if they don't know about the commission, then it's going to be harder for them to find that. And so one of the things that you might want to consider is either a monthly or a bi-monthly article about some of these things that you're doing to put in the local papers and other communication, if there's some social media outlets or whatever. But we don't have many people watching our meetings. And I know they're televised throughout the month. Like this meeting will be televised until next, our next meeting. So think of ways that you can get information out to let people know these meetings are available. They can either attend them live or watch them after the fact on CVTV. And if we can use some other media to get that information out, I think that would really add to the success of that program. So I think that's a great idea. But we need to create some exposure for the commission.
And jumping off of that, Franklin, this is Cass Friedland. As Ellen and I, Ellen had these terrific ideas for a newsletter, a simple newsletter that would really tie in, Mike, talking about, you know, Franklin putting little notations and things, sending people to this link. So this, these ideas may just come together in a beautiful way.
And I was thinking National Night Out might be an opportunity for us based on what we decide we can or want to do to get our name out there. So I think there's lots of opportunities, if we look at it, for publicizing the commission.
Is there any reason why if we were to create some kind of a newsletter, that that couldn't be distributed to the list serve? So you've got, I can't not think of his name, the gentleman that sends out the announcements or whatever. Is there any reason it couldn't go out to that list?
I will check on that. I don't think so. Ken mentioned the web idea and we did send that to our communications folks to, because we have to. So we could send, we could ask both of those questions. And so not that I know of, but we'll check into it.
How, how could we move this, this next step of thinking about coalescing these things and then how it would fit into, you know, county protocol? Rather than maybe just waiting from meeting to meeting and touching on it? Is there a deep dive that we could do? Draw up a proposal of some kind? And then we could, you could, you know, let us know how this flies?
I think that's an excellent idea. And Ellen, let me just compliment you. That, that newsletter is a great idea. It would be nice if we could find a way to distribute that to neighborhood associations. And also a way we can maybe get a column in some of the news outlets to publish that newsletter.
So that, that's a great example of where we can coordinate. Because what's the woman's name that, oh, sorry, Ken Lund. What's the woman's name that's in charge of the neighborhood associations for the county?
Mary Lee McCall.
Mary Lee. Again, she may have barriers structurally with the county, but she already has an existing mailing list. And each of those associations have their own mailing lists. It would be beautiful if we could spin off of that.
This is Susan.
Or we can collect our own. I mean, I think it's, it's pretty easy to get, just have people, you give them a place to put their email address into a website and, and then that becomes our own mailing list. That's COA dependent. Because you don't, neighborhoods are neighborhoods. And people are signed up for neighborhood newsletters because they want to be part of the neighborhood newsletter. Commission on Aging might be a different group of people. So we might get a bunch of people, but we might make a bunch of people angry because they're getting too many newsletters. So I don't know. But I do believe, I think a newsletter is the best way for us to start trying to reach out to people, to tell them about what's going on here. Because honestly, like you read about something, people don't read the newspaper. So we got that. But nobody's going to see a social media post that says, come to our next meeting, because people aren't on social media or whatever. But you send them a newsletter, you give them some good information, and you tell them about an upcoming meeting that's coming in the next week or so, they might actually show up. And then maybe Ken could publish a nice little blurb, like he's talked about having things or Franklin, you could write a story about what happened down in LA. You know, whatever it is, I'll get you writing. But whatever it is, a nice little newsletter, short, to the point, with a little bit of extra information, people, we could get people to sign up. We could use QR codes to get people to our website to sign up for the newsletter. And we could have our own news, our own mailing list. I mean, we could use a county list serve, but we could also have our own.
Ellen, would you take the lead on the newsletter aspect and work with the communications subcommittee?
Sure, as long as I know who they are. We've already talked to, Cass and I already kind of sent an email to Donna to talk about, to start talking about a newsletter. So is Donna the entire subcommittee? Okay.
Thank you, Ellen. That's a great idea. Absolutely.
So this is Susan. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Previously, in the communications subcommittee, we had Donna, Ken, Justin and Mel. We cannot have more than four members. So, well, and
So what keeps somebody from presenting to the committee, though? They're not a member. They're presenting an idea.
I'm sorry. I was, I was doing multitasking, so maybe I missed what you were saying. But we were going to add Ellen, I think. Where my mind was going, we were adding Ellen in for the newsletter part. We have four people on the committee. We just couldn't have five people meet at the same time. So, but having other people present, that's totally fine. I was just thinking of.
A board member presents, that makes it a quorum?
Right, five or more members.
Regardless of their role in the meeting.
Let me, let me make a suggestion. Both Mel and I will be terming out at the end of May, is it?
May would be your last meeting, correct?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll talk to Mel. Maybe we should swap Mel out for Ellen on that committee. Would you be okay with that, Ellen? Okay.
I'm sorry I missed that.
Okay. So what I'll do is I will send those folks an email and we can start talking about if we want to have a meeting or what we want to, what we want to do. But we would need to, yeah, I could email Mel or maybe you could email Mel first and ask about that. And then we could get working on it.
I'll send him an email this evening if he doesn't show up for the regular meeting.
He is trying to get into the, he's been emailing us. He's trying to get into the virtual meeting and he's been having trouble. And so we're, he is online. But, well, he's online, but I don't know that he can hear us.
Okay, just a, just a time check. It's 4:15 and we still have annual reports, volunteer committee. So can we get through these in like the next few minutes? Who's on the volunteer committee? Subcommittee, excuse me?
Mike and I are on that. We haven't met really formally, but Mike's idea, I think we're going to use as our suggest, or our report out for this month.
Okay. Okay. And what about the annual report? Who's on that one?
So the, the committee members for the annual report reviewed the language, the text, and the draft is now ready. We're going to send that back out to the language, the text, and the draft is now ready. We're going to send that back out to the committee to look at and see if they have any other comments. And then that is ready to go for the annual report out to council, which we are working on scheduling. Currently, we have two potential dates for that. It's April 23rd and April 30th. It would be a work session. It would be in the morning, most likely at nine, but they give us the time once they formally schedule it. So we're working on, on getting that work session scheduled. And we would invite all members to attend the work session with council. And, you know, for those that can make it, we have done the presentation in different ways before, so I guess we would probably be talking with Franklin about how he would like the presentation to be made, either by him with some additional input from members. We'll work that out, but those are the, the dates that we're looking at, that were given to us as possibilities.
Okay, I'm not sure if I'm on that committee or not, but could you also send me a copy of the annual report?
Yes, April 23rd and April 30th in the morning, most likely nine, but it could be 10 or possibly 11, but we'll know that more once we get a, a date set.
Okay. That takes care of the annual report. Can we do announcements and liaison reports real quick? I'm the lazy. Justin is lazy on liaison for ASWA and he's not here, so we don't have a report on that. And Ken and I are liaison with the FAC. So Ken, would you like to go ahead and talk a little bit about our call yesterday?
Yes, I would, Franklin. Feel free to jump in. I've got to tell you, there's been so much between that call and, and this moment. I'm a little cloudy. We meet with David and Amy monthly. It was just David yesterday. But we started to talk about the relationship between, and the, and the connections between, for example, the home, the council for the homeless, Vancouver Housing Authority and Public Health, and how they all interact or don't interact. And he was, he, he had, we'd started that conversation and he and I had started that conversation, I don't know, maybe a week or 10 days ago. And he came back with some great, great reference material. We, we now have access and I think you'll get a copy of the Council on A Homelessness Annual Report, the Vancouver Housing Authority's Annual Report. There's a summary of the statistics that I put together. And Franklin, I don't know if you plan on distributing that or not, but if not, I'm happy, happy to give it to you. But some of the statistics that are specific to Clark County with regards to seniors and housing are just frankly breathtaking. 20, you know, we'll talk about it later, but one of the statistics, statistics he gave us, 26% of the people that are homeless are seniors in Clark County. I mean, we talk about homelessness and I'll say, I talk about homelessness where it becomes white noise. It, it's not that it's not important to you, but it becomes routinized. And when you realize one in four of the people on the street are 55, 60, 65 or older, that is a staggering commentary on who we are as a country. But there is, based on the information he gave me, some research I did, there's eight or 10 pages of just bullet point facts, that if you want to bring yourself up to speed quickly, I think it'll do that. Would you agree with that comment, Franklin?
Yes, I would. And just to clarify, when Ken used the term breathtaking, that was not in a good way. So what I was, is yes, we do, we're going to have a panel here that's going to talk about homelessness. And after that, we might want to think about distributing either by email or something, the information that you put together.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. And for those of you that prefer MP3s over reading, I'm happy to send you an MP3 version of it.
Okay, since we're running a little over, unless there's any more questions or comments, let's adjourn in this meeting so we can get ready for our official meeting at 4:30. Any, any questions, comments? Okay, the work session meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.